Good afternoon, everyone. Our order of business this afternoon, of course, is to meet with and hear from our Virginia School Board Association partners in the business of the superintendent search. So we're glad to be joined by the executive director of the Virginia School Board Association, Ms. Gina Patterson, and staff member Peter. Please join us here at the table, and we're going to turn the meeting over to you for you to lead us further. Now, as they're getting situated here, the other order of business associated with this that I hope we can nail down today because of the tight timeline that we're under, and certainly there are some decisions that need to be made, so we're all very clear calendar-wise on where we're headed from here with community forums and such. I would hope that we will manage our time such that we're able to nail down while we're together the dates for the next few weeks so that we can move forward efficiently and with clear communication, not only among us but with our stakeholders as well, and staff and administration that will be assisting us, will be very clear on dates, times, and places that we'll be meeting as a part of this process. Any comments on that before I turn it over to Ms. Patterson? Okay. All right. Ms. Patterson?
Thank you. Thank you, Board, and thank you all for having us here today. We have put books, search manuals, in front of each of your desks. We're not going to go through this book page by page, but there are some key items we do need to highlight. And the most important thing we need to do here today is establish a timeline in which you will be conducting the search, because what you want to do is leave here today to let your community know where you're at, where you want to be, and we want to keep you within the law, because this is, you're going to look at this timeline and say, wow, this is an aggressive timeline. And it is that. It is that because we have no choice. By law, you have 180 days, once a vacancy occurs, to announce your next superintendent. Your superintendent did not leave on June 30th. He left at the end of April, so it wasn't perfect timing, but it is what it is. So this timeline is aggressive, because we, the main thing we need to do is make sure we keep you legal throughout this process. So with that said, Peter, do you want to start by talking a little bit about the search book, and then we'll start with the timeline?
Sure. As Gina mentioned, we have the search book, this manual, and this is for each of you to use for the duration of the search process. And there's a good amount of information here, and I'd like to highlight some of this as we go, as we talk a little bit about what the process is going to look like. So what I would like to do initially is to just kind of give an overview of what those tasks are, and then reference the sections in this book that apply to those. The first one, as Gina mentioned, is going to be today, is this initial meeting with the Board. And as was discussed, we will be establishing the timeline, determining dates for the forum, talking a little bit about the community survey and ways to engage the public in learning about the qualities and characteristics that city stakeholders are looking for in the next superintendent. Because as you all know, the key is finding the right fit for the community and finding the best person that can come in and do a wonderful job for Norfolk City. So to help do that, what I'd like to do is actually point to a couple of pages here. Hold on one moment. This is getting a little out of the book because, out of the order, but I did want to point out to, with, one of the handouts that you have is an example, Superintendent Criteria Survey. And the survey is one example of how you can gather stakeholder input and stakeholder feedback. And this survey is, we have an electronic version that's already set up that the Board would be able to post on the Division website and distribute electronically, but also to have hard copies available at the schools and community locations to gather stakeholder feedback. And so that survey, along with the community forums and any other opportunities that you might utilize to gather the input, is what you're going to use when we reach Task Two of the, to develop the profile of the superintendency. And that profile is what we're going to use when we promote the position nationwide to gather applicants for the superintendency. So that being said, I do want to now get into the search manual just briefly. So as we start going through, the first few pages do talk a little bit about the VSBA, the association, our background. You may, many of you may already be aware of this based on the information that was provided previously, but the School Boards Association has been conducting superintendent searches for more than 40 years and is responsible for approximately, placement of approximately 75 of the current 132 superintendents here in Virginia. I will brag for Gina, because she won't do it for herself, but she was involved in all those searches, because Gina's been doing these superintendent searches for-
Not 40 years.
Not 40 years. For several years. And has done a great job. So in terms of finding somebody who has more experience conducting superintendent searches in Virginia, you're not going to find anybody with more experience than the person sitting to my right. We only specialize in superintendent searches for Virginia school divisions. We are not a generalist. We do not do any other sort of search. We are a member of the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers, which is through the National School Boards Association, and is basically an affiliation of all of the other superintendent search staff members in all of the other school boards associations across the country. And that provides us several benefits. One, when we conduct searches, they truly are a nationwide search, because our position announcements are pushed out through the national affiliation to all of those other states. I'll give you a prime example from a school division just down the road. They had 49 applicants, it was Hampton City, they had 49 applicants from 20 different states. So in terms of a nationwide search, that truly was, when you have almost half of the states in the country are represented in the application process. So that's the benefit of the NAS affiliation on the beginning, but on the back end, there's also a lot of benefit as well, because one of the important things that we do for you is reference checks on the candidates who apply. So when we have our second meeting with the Board and we go through the candidates and talk to you about who meet most, if not all, of the stated qualifications that you have in your position announcement, if we have out-of-state applicants, we can rely on that national affiliation for information on those candidates, because they're going to have far more detailed background and information on how successful an individual was. In particular, if there is a sitting superintendent coming from another state, they have firsthand experience and firsthand knowledge of that individual. So I just wanted to, we have some more information about the VSBA experience and benefits there as well, but I wanted to bring some of that to your attention, to let you know just the breadth of experience. In terms of, starting on page 10, there's some information for you on the superintendency background information. Talks a little bit about licensure requirements in terms of a doctorate versus holding a master's degree and having a certain number of completed hours beyond the master's degree to get licensure. There are some options, you know, if someone held a senior leadership position as a CEO or was a senior military officer, they technically could, if there was, if the Board of Education approved it. But how many of those do you think there are in Commonwealth of Virginia right now? None. So we don't have any former admirals that were, well, maybe there might be, that went through, got traditional licensure, but not just through a waiver of some sort. Then we have some information on the major responsibilities of the superintendents. Page 14 has some very important information about procedures for appointment. As Gina mentioned, you do have 180 calendar days after the vacancy occurs in order to fill that, to announce who the new superintendent is. Does not mean that the person has to take that seat within that 180 days, but you do have to make that announcement. And as you'll notice with the timeline that we, the tentative timeline that we provide you, that provided you, that is taken into consideration. So it is an aggressive timeline, but those 180 days can go by very quickly, especially when you get into the interview process and contract negotiation timeframe. A few, some more information on page 17 and 18, which really more gets into later on once you do find a superintendent individual that you'd like to select, certificate of appointments, oath of superintendence. Starting on page 20, just some basic background information. 23, and again, so that way we're not reading the 75 pages together, you can read this at your leisure, but it goes through a little bit of the details of the different steps. And then it has on page 25 is the sample timeline. I don't know if you'd like to go through the timeline now?
And you all have a sample timeline at your desk right now, if you all pull that up. Again, I'm going to say it again, it's very aggressive. I'm sure you all are looking at it and saying, how can we accomplish all of this by October? But it can be done, it's just, it's a lot of work. With that said, Peter, you want to-
Yeah, so what you'll notice with the timeline is we have the first date, that May 13th, the second date on there at 2:00 p.m., that's the first meeting with the VSBA. And that's where we really, this is where we really want to finalize this timeline. In particular, public hearing, forum opportunities for you to hear from stakeholders. And also, it also has the date for the survey response, deadline for the surveys, which typically aligns with the final community forum. What I, when we start looking a little bit further on, you're going to notice that there's some information about providing established qualifications to the VSBA, receiving applications and whatnot. But what I'd like to do right now, because the priority for the Board right now is to get community feedback and information about the characteristics and qualities that they would like to see in the next superintendent, because this is going to help you when you are crafting the position qualifications and position announcement that will get published.
And I want to stop you.
Yes.
And I have to say this, if you all are asking for community input, you have to use community input. You can't say you want input from your community and then you, for instance, if it's a requirement that the next superintendent a doctorate is required, you won't go out and hire someone that doesn't have a doctorate. So if you want community input, you have to agree that you're going to use it. Law doesn't say you have to include community in the process this day and age, and with this Board, you all know you will not be successful without that, so.
Great. So we do have several dates on here. We have May 20th, June 3rd, June 4th, and June 6th as potential dates for public hearings. And I believe these are dates that perhaps you've all reviewed and to see if they were potentially okay for you all.
And one of these is a-
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What would you say?
Mm-hmm.
How do you determine, if one person says that required doctorate, how do you determine that?
Great question. Great question.
Because if someone said, I want someone that has pink hair, is that community input? And we ignore that?
Well, I agree with you, and that's part of why we have developed a survey with you, and we will take the survey results, provide them back to you by that deadline date, so you use those results to help you drive those qualifications.
So you get, based upon 50% of the responses or 80% of the responses, how do you, how do you determine that?
Right, I mean, if it's 90% are saying required and you put preferred, there's a disconnect there. But if 40% or 50% are saying, you would say preferred. So we're going to-
Okay, I just wanted clarification.
No, I think that's a great point, because, you know, everybody's going to want something a little bit different.
I was going to say, we're not going to be able to fulfill that everybody is-
Yeah, and you're not. And it's like saying that, let's say you list 100 qualifications. You all know realistically that no one is going to have 100% what you say you're stating in your qualifications. It's just not possible. It's not possible. But our goal, and your goal, is to get as close to that as possible. Does that make sense?
And if I could add to that as well, is, you know, really, when you're looking at the community feedback, realize that you're going to have the survey results, which are going to give you those percentages like you're talking about. And if you notice with the sample questions, you know, for example, one is an earned doctorate, required, preferred, not important. And this is just one way that you're gaining community feedback, so you're also hearing from folks at these community forums and any other meetings that you may have. So you may gather other information that reinforces what is here, or maybe is not as strong, people don't have as strong of an opinion. But where this also gets, is important, is it's not, doesn't come just into play when you're looking at the position announcement, also later on, when you start interviewing and looking at candidates. Because when you are determining what particular characteristics that you want, that are required or preferred, realize that the more required characteristics that you have, the smaller that pool is of individuals that you can pull from. So if you put out a position announcement that says that we want somebody that requires an earned doctorate, requires experience as a superintendent, requires experience as a deputy superintendent, requires experience, you know, as a teacher, as so on and so on, it's going to be far more challenging to find somebody to meet all of those. So that's, as Gina mentioned, you know, if you have, you know, 40, 50% of your community that is saying, you know, they would like somebody who has experience as a classroom teacher, you know, that is something that you can either, as a Board, determine, you know, that, because it's not a vast majority, but it's a strong enough, that we do want to say that as preferred, but when we're looking at our interview questions, because you always want to go back to this information and this community feedback, not only when you're creating the position announcement, but when you're creating your interview questions and looking at the candidates, you can go back and say, well, you know, we've got it down to a couple of these candidates, and they're looking great, but this one does have more of those characteristics.
And so what you're going to say at that point, which one meets most, if not all of those stated qualifications? But that's a good question. Does that make sense?
Well, it does and it doesn't, because in our last search, we had certain requirements, and you're exactly right, it shrunk the pool of possible candidates. And I, myself, have learned from that. I don't know if the, if people in the community have that same experience, that they will make that same decision, because off the top of your head, it says, yeah, it should have a doctorate, it should have, be a sitting superintendent, or have a superintendent experience. That is necessarily, that on the surface sounds really good, but you're also limiting yourself to who you can, who you can interview if that's the predominant characteristic that people are looking for. So it's a fine line. We want to have the community input, but the decision is still going to be the Board's.
Right, and you are exactly right. That's what the Code of Virginia says, so I agree with you. And you don't, I think, as Peter just said, you don't, what you don't want to do is put yourself in such a position that you do have that narrow, because there could be a great individual out there that's, you know, two months from a PhD. So I hear you.
The Board's never had a superintendent's position.
That is true also. That is true also, and that's why we said there's a difference between required and preferred, and it makes a huge difference. So, no, that's a great point, Brett.
Ms. Doherty, or then Mr. Jordan?
I do think it's important, Dr. Robinson, you had a good point about, just raising the question now, because I do think this day is the day we level set expectations of, we want community input, absolutely, but we have to be reasonable as well so that we can conduct a very strong search. So I think it's important that we are having that discussion, because we don't want to have to go back to the community and say later, well, we really meant this. So I think it's-
Right, but you shouldn't, you want to be transparent from day one, and you don't want to make it look like, oh, we said this, but we meant this.
Right, that's why I'm glad we're having this kind of open discussion now.
And it's a valid question.
Yeah, because I think in the past, we've not maybe leveled set expectations with the community for other things. I'm not talking about a superintendent search, but other things we've done as a division. And I think this is an opportunity for us to clearly level set expectations so that nobody can question. So thank you for bringing that to the floor, as well as Dr. Robinson.
Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, I guess I was going to kind of say, what I'm hearing is part science, part art.
Right.
And so from the feedback that we're going to get from surveys, from input, there may be certain things that rise to the top. And what I hear you're saying is, as those things rise to the top, then as a Board, we need to be respectful of the fact that these things have risen to the top. So as we make these final recommendations back to you, we consider that. It's not that it's a handcuff, but it is an indicator of what the community values. And frankly, as a Board, we've talked about, I think, trying to make sure that we get that input and make sure it is as diverse, and that's why we're talking about, you know, locations and different forums to get that input. So it's a, it's a strong guide, it's not a handcuff, but we'll see certain things, at least I would anticipate, that would rise to the top, and you're saying that we need to make sure that we are respectful of those things as they rise to the top. Is that-
Exactly.
Okay.
So going back to the public hearing, the community forum dates and times and locations, that is something that, you know, once these are finalized, we're really going to want to make sure that those are, those are out in the community as early as possible and as soon as possible. We did provide, you know, just a sample news release that could be utilized to make that announcement, and it also includes in there a link to the community survey, which is active. That link is valid and active. One thing I would like to point out on that, on that link, because I, it often is, it's very good to get that on the homepage of the Division website. Some divisions have created their own special sections on the homepage of the website that are dedicated to the superintendent search. So it gives, you know, a list of all the engagement opportunities, a link to the survey results. Just double-check that link if you do post that on there, because there's actually a backslash R backslash in the middle there, that if that's missed, it won't function. And I just wanted to make sure that you all had that.
So can I ask two questions regarding the public hearing?
Yeah.
Or one question on the public hearing. What is the format of those public hearing evenings? What does that look like? Who hosts them? Who facilitates them? Who gathers the information?
Well, I'm not sure, are they all evenings? Because I might suggest until you would, that they would not be all evening, to accommodate those that may work in the evening.
There's a few evening, few midday, few morning, one weekend. So they are diverse, but-
What do they look like? Yeah, typically, the public hearings, the forums are organized like any other feedback forum that school divisions would have. Oftentimes, it's really a listening opportunity for you. So it's not some, it's, you know, in many cases, it's where the, it'll be a set period of time where each speaker has two to three minutes to give their feedback, their input on what qualities and what characteristics that they're looking for in the next superintendent. Oftentimes, it would be either the school board chair or the school board member that is going to be the primary liaison with VSBA, so who's kind of the, that main front person during the search, would just, you know, get things started. Most Board members at that point are, you know, keeping down, keeping their own personal notes, but they could have a staff member there that also is jotting down major, major topics, major points that you all want to make sure that you have. And it's important to keep those, keep those notes in case a Board member happens to not be in attendance. But with any sort of public hearing like this, we, of course, encourage as many members as possible to be in attendance, so you can hear that information firsthand. But it's typically, that's the usual format that most of the school divisions are using, and it's worked well.
And the focus is just on the qualifications.
That's right. Exactly. And that's a great point. Really, the point for these public hearings is really to look forward, and it's about the qualifications and the qualities of the next superintendent. Who do we want in that position that can take the division forward and will be invested in the city? And that's why, if you notice, even in the survey questions, it's not just about qualifications, like, do you have a doctorate? Were you a teacher or whatnot? There are questions in there about what is their leadership style? How involved are they in community relations? You know, what type, you know, what are some personality characteristics? Because those are all important components of a leader in your community. And so those are the types of things that we, you really want to ensure that the community and stakeholders understand that you're looking for in those community forums. Because those forums, and I may be speaking out of turn, but those forums are not about looking at the past, looking in the rearview mirror, because there's not a lot of benefit there. You know, it's, everybody in the community can reflect on what were we happy with, what were we not happy with, but where do we want to be and what type of leader do we want? And that's what those forums are, and, you know, I really, I think that's an important point of focus for everyone through this process, is to continue looking forward with that.
Dr. Robinson, and then Ms. Doherty. Oh, I'm sorry. I think Dr. Gabriel's first.
And when you mentioned that the link is going to be on the newsletter and when we have the forums, it truly is the entire community. It's not just parents that we want to hear from. We want to hear from teachers, parents, family members, business leaders, anybody who has a stakehold and the potential progress or hopeful progress of Norfolk Public Schools, we want to hear from them. So I think that's very important. So anybody can do the survey.
That's right.
And you would encourage everybody.
And we want to hear from a diverse group.
And I think you should have hard copies at every school. You have copies here at central office, you put them at local libraries, bank, because what you want to do is you don't want someone to say, I didn't have access to the internet, or I, you know, I'm not comfortable using the internet. Let them fill out a hard copy and drop it off at the nearest school or wherever, wherever there's a drop box. And then you can still, you can use those survey results, because what you don't want is anyone saying that they did not, after the fact, had a part in the process. They weren't allowed to actually, whether it's verbally expressed through a community forum or participate in the survey, you want as many people as possible to participate.
I have a question about the forum itself. Have you any, what is your experience on doing more roundtables? I've seen, when we've had more roundtable discussions and things like that, and then came back as a group afterwards, were much more effective than people standing up one after another, repeating the same thing, or?
I think that's-
I wonder, what's your experience with those?
I think those work well. We call them chat and choose. I think they work well, and I, our thought process was that you were going to do a combination of both of those. Is that not correct, or you haven't talked about it yet? No, those work, the one-on-ones, they work well. We've seen them where there may be seven tables, there are seven Board members, seven roundtables, each Board member is at a different table, and they're taking notes. No, they work very well.
And then come back in a recession afterwards and compile the list. In my experience, it's four years of being on the Board here, that we get better feedback and can have a little bit of dialogue at that same time, and it just creates better understanding than just us copying down notes.
No, I agree.
Okay, Ms. Doherty?
And I also think that before we finish today, where we obviously need to conclude the dates, locations, and all that, and make that final with a timeline, is that we need to agree who's going to facilitate these events, who's going to make sure that we're compiling everything and collecting everything, and do we have enough Board members there to listen? I know there's one date, June 6th, that many of us are not. So just, I think, level set expectation among ourselves that before we go, we're very clear, what is next week going to look like? What's the first chat and choose going to look like? So there's an understanding from the public's point of view as well as ours.
Just from a logistics standpoint, that Gina reminded me of by bringing up the survey with the paper copies, you know, along the way, all these, once you do have paper copies, these can be provided to the VSBA, and we will input the data from the paper copies into the system, so that way when we provide you with the final report, it has all of the information in one place. So it's just a little easier for you all to review that and to have that information. So with the, with the public hearing dates, did you all want to finalize the dates, times, and information now?
Yes, but wanted to allow you to finish, you know-
Okay, and then come back to that?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to come back to that afterward?
Yes, after you've talked about the entire process and the timeline, and then we can take care of those logistical matters.
Okay, perfect. So what will happen then is, once you have the feedback and the information from your community stakeholders, that's when, if you could flip to page 34 of your search manual, and that's just one example, a superintendent search announcement, and there are several in here. This is an example of the type of announcement that will be published nationwide for you all to publicize the fact that there's a position opening. And what we typically like to do in the announcement is include a brief amount of information about the community, a little bit about the school division, and then those stated qualifications. And if you take some time at some point and look at several of these, and even if you went to the VSBA website under the current superintendent's page list where there are current openings listed, you'll see that they do vary in terms of those qualifications that are required, those that are preferred, certain things that school divisions are looking for. You know, a good example is, I believe it was last year, we had a division that was very interested in integrating and implementing a one-to-one initiative in the division, because they had had some stumbling blocks, because the infrastructure in the division couldn't support the one-to-one devices because of bandwidth requirements and whatnot. So one of the characteristics they were looking for was somebody who was technologically savvy and had experience with that. So that's the type of thing that could be included in the qualifications of looking for somebody with that type of expertise. Where this is very important is that not only is it helping candidates know what you are looking for, but it also helps us when we are reviewing the applicants as they come in and reviewing them. So to use that example, if, you know, a school division is looking for, a school board is looking for somebody with that experience of, you know, implementing one-to-one initiatives, has led that in a division, well, when we start doing reference checks, we're going to ask specifically about that characteristic, to find out, well, hey, what type of experience does a person have in this? So when we meet with you all the second time, we can say to you, these individuals meet most, if not all, of your stated qualifications, and if they don't meet all, where? You know, what are some of those things that that might be? And it might be, you know what, this person has all these qualifications, but they don't have as much of that technology or the finance, or, you know, whatever that experience might be. So with, once that is publicized, and we do post the position announcements on the Education Week website through the NAS affiliation, we give- the Education Week website through the NASS affiliation, we give a full four weeks, actually, let me step back one thing, one, one, one point. One thing you'll notice that we include on all position announcements is that candidates must eligible to be a superintendent in Virginia. You have to be on, on an approved list to be a, to be a superintendent. You will oftentimes find people who are, especially if they're coming from out of state, even if they're sitting superintendents from North Carolina or some other place, who have, they may have submitted their information to the Department of Education, or even may not have submitted it yet, but they are there, but they're not on the Virginia list. You can interview them, but a position cannot be offered to them until they are on that list. So that is something that we look at from the start.
But that's not your job. That's our job.
And we will monitor that closely. And if, you know, we oftentimes will just proactively, if an applicant is applying from out of state, we see that they say they don't have it and they have not, not submitted information, we'll reach out to them and say, "We would suggest you start that process if you're serious about a position in Virginia."
Or make sure they can get on the list, because there are times when they actually can't qualify for the lists.
So a candidate from out of the state presumably would have to get on this qualified list. Is there a timeline of which they need to get on it by in order for them to be within this?
No, I made a call, what, yesterday? The board was ready to make an announcement, and the paperwork was actually sitting on the desk of the department, and they just hadn't filled the paperwork out. As long as it's done before they actually go out to make that, take that public vote and sign the contract, they're fine.
Okay.
And that's for in-state or out-of-state? Even in-state applicants have to be on the eligible list.
So this is more of a procedural thing?
Correct. Correct. So once the, once the board gets together after the public hearings and has the survey results, you will meet to establish those qualifications. We then finalize the position announcement, advertise it on Ed Week, push it out to our NASS affiliation, post it on the VSBA website.
State superintendent.
State superintendents. We have, we also have a large distribution list of people who have contacted us, asking to be notified when there are superintendencies available in Virginia. And the superintendent page on the VSBA website is regularly, if you look at our web statistics, you know, regularly reviewed, and people like, like knowing what's going on and where positions are available. We then, from that, that point, we give four full weeks for applications to be received. And you'll notice, starting on page thirty-eight, is some of the information in the, for the application. Now, we utilize an online system called AppliTrak, which is the most popular online application system used by K-12 educational institutions across the country. And what this allows us to do, it allows us to set the, the, have your position announcement there, set the actual deadline, so the, the position automatically closes at midnight that evening, so there's no question as to whether or not things were submitted under the deadline. But it also enables board members to have individual usernames and passwords to log in and review applicants as they arrive. That's a very, a very important thing to remember, because this is not a situation where, when we meet with you the second time, we might come to you and say, "You had forty-five completed applications. Here are the seven that we think you should look at." If you have forty-five applications, you're going to have the opportunity to review all forty-five applications. And we encourage you to review those applications prior to the second meeting with you, so you have some idea of who the applicants are. So when we go through them with you and say, "These are the ones that meet most, if not all, of your qualifications," you have some idea of their back, of their background. And in many cases, you might have somebody that you're like, "You know, but I saw this application from so-and-so. They're applicant number one-twenty-seven. Can you tell us a little bit more about, about them and, you know, why they didn't meet all of the qualifications?"
Do you recommend the board reviews all of the applications that you all received? Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Because we're not going to replace your judgment with ours. And it's very important that you all.
They have to take, you have to take ownership.
Take ownership of that. And really, and see, see what applicants and what caliber of applicants that you're receiving. So the, the application system, it asks a variety of questions, of course, about employment and experiences, education, licensure. There's also some information there, statement pages, where it allows them to give specific information as to why they think they would be the best fit for Norfolk City Public Schools. So you can, they can then do some research on the division and then put information specific to you to review. This also allows them to update supplemental informations and information and whatnot. So, starting on page forty-two is some information about how you would access it, but this, again, is getting down the road. You would each get a username and password to, to access that information. Once we receive all those applications, we would do reference checks, have the second meeting with you. At that time, the board would then determine how many of the applicants that you would like to bring in for a first round of interviews. And that number is dependent on how many the board decides that you'd all like to, like to meet with. And that's something that we would talk in much more detail about at the, at the second, at the second meeting with you all. But we do provide, provide guidance in that in terms of sample interview questions that are category-specific. We'll also talk to you again about referencing your community feedback and information to make sure that you're hitting on some of those hot topics that were brought up in your forums and also in your, your survey results. We also provide some sample interview organizers, which are very important, because if you've ever conducted a series of interviews with multiple candidates, you remember the first one and the last one, but the ones in between can blend together like nobody's business. So it's really important to keep, keep the notes and, and information. I will also point out that during the, during that interview process, the board does not have to specify the specific date, time, or location of the interviews, just a fifteen-day window that interview, the interview process, interviews will be taking place, and we have specific language that, that we provide you, and you would just do fifteen-day windows until the, the interview process is done. We tell you that for most boards, it's basically almost a three-round process. You've got the first round, and I'm just going to use, use a number here just to, for better illustration purposes. Say you brought in seven first-round candidates to interview, and you determined after that first round that you wanted to bring back three. And then you, you brought back those three, and then you had it, you determined based on that second round, you had, you had your final candidate. Oftentimes, a board will bring that individual back for more of a low-key meal function and have them, if they have a spouse, encourage them to bring, bring the spouse. That way, you get to know them in a little bit less of a, a pressure situation of a, of a formal interview. That first round of interviews, you're going to find that you want the questions to be nice and consistent from candidate to candidate, but the second round gets a little more specific to that individual. And that's where it's important to use some of the organizers that we, that we will provide you and include here. But again, we get into far more detail on this with the second meeting with you when we, when we talk about the, the individual candidates. At the end of the packet, there is a sample superintendent's contract that you could utilize and review, and there's some excellent information in there. There are particular areas that are highlighted that we encourage you to, to review very closely. This also is, is, illustrates a few of the, the value-added services that you can expect. Once you are in contract negotiations with your final candidate, our Director of Legal and Policy Services or one of our staff attorneys will, is more than happy to review the contract for you very often. You know, in some cases, boards will have, you know, their attorney work on it, but they still want our, our attorney to look at it as well, because she looks at so many of these and has, you know, just having some fresh eyes on it. One of the other value-addits is that we recommend within six months of having your new superintendent, that you all come to Charlottesville for training, board development, government's training, to really establish a relationship with, with your new superintendent and talk about roles, responsibilities, and priorities as well. So as you can see from the, from the timeline, the beginning is, is far, far easier to establish dates, fix dates. Because when we get later on, you know, even, even, you know, receive applications, once applications are in and we have the second meeting to review applicants, the timeline is very much dependent on schedules, availability, how many candidates you bring in, how many rounds. And what I would, what I would strongly encourage is, as, as we're working through this process, is to start already looking ahead into August, September for those dates and times that might be, might be convenient for all of the board members to, to attend, because you want all board members to participate in, in, in all interviews. That's something, you know, a little bit later on, you know, we'll talk about as well, but it's very important to consider that. And even contract negotiations can take longer than, than some anticipate. You may have a final candidate, and it could take several weeks to finalize the, finalize the contract. So that end date, there's, there's a lot of flex there, but we do want to make sure that we're staying within that one-hundred-and-eighty days. So that's the process in a nutshell. Do you have any particular questions?
Yes, my question is, sitting superintendents that we would interview, special considerations for them in the final interview process, is there, are there?
Well, one word that we're going to use very often is confidentiality. In particular, a, a division the size of Norfolk, and, you know, well-known school division, is going to attract sitting superintendents, and.
It's probably going to be the majority of your applicants.
I would agree. I would agree that the majority of, you know, a large majority, a large number of your applicants are going to be sitting superintendents. And if you talk to any, any sitting superintendent who is, especially those that are, that are worth their salt and is considering a move, confidentiality is so key, because they don't want to violate the relationship with their, with their board. And they want, they want to be sure that, that confidentiality is secure through the entire process. And that, very often, you will, you'll find, and we see this all the time, the window will be open for four weeks, and board members will say, "We're not getting as many applicants as we hoped." It's like, just, just wait. They'll come. Just wait. And then sure enough, in that last week, last few days, you'll get a lot of applicants. And very often, it's those sitting superintendents, because they want their information out there for as little time as possible. And that also goes into when, when you're conducting interviews, when the board is, is accessing information on AppliTrak with your individual username and password, those usernames and passwords have to be protected. Board member, or, board members should not be sharing any information about any candidates with anybody else other than, other than your fellow board members. When we review candidate information, we use candidate ID numbers, which apply to, which are automatically generated in the application system. But that confidentiality is very important from the start all the way up until that, that day that that contract is signed.
And if you decide on a different process, then you, we need to state that upfront, because that will determine the candidate pool you'll receive as well. So play a huge part.
How many candidates, how many superintendent positions are open in Virginia right now?
There are probably ten or eleven open right now.
Well, a lot of them are.
But they're all, they're all, they're.
But they're closed.
I mean, we have one right next door to you that's getting ready to make an announcement today, you know, another one that's making.
In terms of open applications?
Physically open, yeah. You all are it.
I mean, there might be, there's probably a, less than a handful.
Brad, because in an ideal world, a lot of boards like it clean, so that the superintendent will start on July one.
Right.
And that's an ideal world, but, so no, the, all the ones we've worked with have actually physically closed.
Right, all of the applications are closed.
And there may be two more coming, but.
Well, then let me, let me rephrase my question. How many, how many open seats are there? How many unfilled superintendent seats are there in the state of Virginia right now?
There are eleven. But they're not divisions necessarily that you would be competing with.
And that's not my question.
Oh, okay.
And my next question would be, how many would you guess are in the United States?
A lot. I mean, I don't have a.
Yeah, I was going to say.
And, and I say that because in the past two years, we've done twenty-five searches. There are only a hundred and thirty-two divisions in the state of Virginia. There's a lot of turnover.
So how about, and how many would you say in urban divisions similar to ours?
A lot.
A lot.
And, I mean, you all know this, in urban super, well, maybe you don't know this, the, the average tenure for an urban superintendent is a little less than three years. In the state of Virginia, our tenure for superintendents is a little over seven years, but the majority of the districts in the state of Virginia are not urban. So that's not, you know, comparing apples to apples, if that makes sense.
It does. I just wanted that brought out in the public.
Actually, it's a great point, that, that, there is a difference there.
There's a lot of openings.
There are a lot.
Lot of competition.
Yeah.
Okay. All right? Yes?
I have one more question about the actual survey. Find it real quick. We were going to, we were going to move on to the, to the dates afterwards? Is that what the thing was? So just so that we're all on the same page with the survey, that's, and this is live currently, or?
That link is, is avail, is, is live.
It's ready to go.
So once it goes out.
It hasn't gone out.
It hasn't gone out, because you all would, you all would distribute that.
I was just reading the categories, and I just wanted to make sure that we understood what the details were in each of the categories, so that maybe if the community had any questions, we could make sure that everything was clear here. This looks very similar to the one that Hugh put out.
It's a national survey.
Okay, okay. So, under leadership management skills, can you kind of elaborate on what it means to be a risk taker and what it means to be team player comfortable with shared decision-making?
In terms of.
Well, okay.
I mean, that's, that's going to be very, I mean, and the reason why, there, a lot of people are going to, may interpret that different ways.
Okay.
So that's a very, you know, I think.
That's an open, yeah.
It's, 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 again, but that's, oftentimes, you know, when, when you think about leadership management skills, you know, some, I'll give, you know, give an example with, with risk taker, might be somebody who tries something new, understanding that it may not be successful, but wants.
Putting an initiative out there and then realizing that, hey, it may not have been the best route for that division, let's, you know, but at least sticking their foot out there to actually try that.
And is willing to, willing to try and willing to, because, because, and, and a lot of this comes down, a lot of this is helpful too, when, on the, on the, the other side of it, when, when we're providing reference information, because we will find information about certain candidates who are very much, if, if you're going in a diff, and if you're, the school division's going in a direction, and you want somebody to sit in the driver's seat and keep the car pointed in that direction, they're going to do that okay. If you want somebody to come in, shake things up a little bit, try new programs, try new initiatives, some folks are not going to.
Whereas a risk taker may be a negative in one division, it may be just what another one needs, whereas another one may say more status quo is what they need at any given time, so it'll depend.
And in terms of leadership management skills, team player comfortable with shared decision-making, that's off, that, that's really getting down to whether or not, are they, are they a task-oriented person, or are they a, you know, people-oriented person? Because, you know, they're, again, that is something that we learn about, what's their leadership style? Because we often have people that are very, they are task-oriented, and what is the end process, that, what is the end that we're getting to? That's important. Where you have others that are more collaborative in nature, they're pulling, they're trying to pull people together, get them involved, see the greater visions, that they're motivated, and, but it's, it really just comes down to personality trait. I'm not sure if that answers.
It does.
Okay.
It does, because I, I think you're correct. It's going to be everyone's own opinion as to how they interpret the survey. And as Ms. Doyle had mentioned, setting our expectations early in the beginning, making sure that we are very level with the community as to what we, what the, what the board, you know, wants to get out of this and what the community wants to get out of this, and so that when we see risk taker, we're, we're specifically talking about their leadership management skills versus other things.
Oh, I understand what you're saying, yeah. Exactly, yeah. And that's where it's category-specific, exactly.
Which, you know, it could be interpreted in different ways, you know, where, there, there's many different faces to the citizens of Norfolk. We need to make sure that we are very clear to each of them, so.
Okay? Yes?
So just remind me, if you could, second meeting with VSBA, what is it we do then?
So the second meeting, that's where, if you notice, the deadline prior to that, right now is July tenth, assuming we went with this tentative timeline, July tenth would be the date that the applications were no longer received.
Right.
So that would give a VSBA, me and Gina, time to review the applications, do reference checks, gather background information on the candidates, but also give you time to review candidates if you've not already done so. At that second meeting, that is when we will come to you and go through the candidates that have applied, and let you know which ones meet most, if not all, of the stated qualifications. At that meeting, we also talk in more detail about the interview process, developing interview questions, organizers, and the, kind of the, the next half. and the, kind of the, the next half. So really, it's almost, if you, if you think of the, the search really in two major sections, right? The first major section right now that we're focused on is gathering community feedback and information so that you have the best possible information to create that position announcement, to get it advertised, and so people can start advertising. Once the application date closes, then it's taking that and it's going through the interview process and going through, through those steps to finalize who that person is. So that's really what we, at that second meeting, that's when we really change that focus into determining which candidates are the ones that you'd all like to, to bring in.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are we ready to solidify these dates? Because, uh...
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, can I kind of walk through that based upon the information that we've had out for a couple of weeks and...
Yes.
Kind of see where we are?
Absolutely.
So, um, you know, we had the, following our strategic planning in Charlottesville, you all kind of deputized me to be this liaison. And so I had sent out email to everyone a couple of weeks ago and just kind of walked through again, um, the concept and the process and then we can talk about whether or not we make any adjustments or not. So the idea behind the, having these minimum four hearings, you know, really based upon the V S B A proposal and recommend, and recommendations, was to have two of them in the evening, one on a Saturday morning, one midday. And the idea was to try to make sure that we could make ourselves available and accessible because people work all kinds of days, people have all kinds of daycare arrangements and so forth. So based upon that original idea, the goal was to do one next week as part of our regular business meeting, do one on June the third at Norview High School, which would align with our work session. So both of those would be in the evening. As Ms. Doyle mentioned earlier, originally I had out there the first Saturday in June, and that was June sixth at ten or eleven a.m. And part of the challenge with the, doing the Saturday one, which I think is very important, between the Memorial Day weekend and graduations and everything else, trying to find that Saturday was kind of hard. But right now, it's still tentatively at, on June sixth, Lakewood at eleven a.m. And then that midday one would be June fourth at Brookley Early Childhood Center. So again, it was trying to get each part of the city, try to make sure that we would be, we would be as accessible to those that may not have access to transportation, those and represent different demographics or neighborhoods of the, of the city, be available at different times, and recognizing at least, my thought was at least at those two public hearings, the two evening ones that align with our meetings, that with the exception of Dr. Gabriel, who said she might, might have a training that day...
Yeah, I do.
That at least we would have seven or at least six of the board members there at those, at those two. And then at the Saturday one and the midday one, we knew that that would really be based upon the availability of, of board members. So I've...
I have a quick question. Are you, I'm wondering, the ones in conjunction with your board meetings prior to the board meeting?
Well, that's part of what we need to coordinate, because right now...
I think you're, because your focus has to be, when you're doing these, on those qualifications, you don't want to somehow confuse, does that make sense, confuse what you're doing. Your, all your focus needs to be on working on those qualifications.
Yeah, and that's what I think we're gonna talk through now.
Oh, okay.
Trying to make sure the, the appropriate, if we stick with that schedule, what would be the appropriate timeframe to give the focus that you just described? So I would say if we kind of start with those four hearings and make sure we get straight there, then we can talk about the chat and chew concept.
Okay, all right. So the, uh, the first one then would be next Wednesday, which would be May the twentieth. And that's the day of our regular business meeting. And so originally, the recommendation was to have it kind of as a part of the business meeting. What I'm hearing, Gina, you saying is that separating the two and making sure that the focus is on...
Just so there's no confusion there.
Sure. So, which, which means then that we could perhaps provide that opportunity prior to the start of the business meeting. Business meeting starting at seven, perhaps provide that opportunity from six until six forty-five. Does that work for everyone?
I mean, that's kind of what Janelle recommended, so.
Okay.
So the time would be six o'clock here on that date?
Well, we're gonna be here anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
But I just want to be clear, six o'clock.
Yes. So before we leave that date, I want to make sure...
Student appeal that day?
Well, that's what we need to, need to determine now. So, um, of course, we would start the closed session, uh, usually at three or four p.m. for personnel matters and people personnel matters. Right now, we are scheduled to begin currently at...
At four o'clock. But if you add that, it'll be three o'clock.
At four o'clock. If we do the student appeal, we will do that at three.
It'll be at two if we make the closed session. Do we need to move everything up and down?
Are you still allowing for an hour for the break? Is that, do we need an hour for the break then? Is my question.
At least an half an hour.
Because we always run off.
And we're gonna start at two.
Okay.
There's only been a couple of times we ran.
Well, that's a long, that's a long.
What else, but my idea was that until, you know, we just talked about it today, that if we started at seven and the, the hearing on the qualifications was first, then that might, I'm saying this as a question, that might give the, the focus. It's still at a timeframe that citizens are used to, to come in, but do that piece and get it out the way. And then any other items that we would have, we could, you know, would follow. But again, the idea was that it was just a, a time where I knew we would all be together. Otherwise, we have to figure out, you know, a different time if we decide to move it, whether it's up on that same day or move it to a different day.
So if I recall, we had a previous board meeting where we asked people for public comment and they were confused as to what they were commenting on?
Yeah, it was the budget.
Yes. So my recommendation would be is let's not mix metaphors. Let's not have it during the formal session. Let's keep formal session at seven. And from six to six forty-five, we clearly delineate that that is, we want people to come to the podium and speak for three minutes on what they view to be the ideal qualifications for the next superintendent for the city of Norfolk. And then we break and then we start at seven o'clock and we carry on with our agenda.
Right. To, to stop any kind of confusion, oh, I would not have it on the same day. Because I think we're gonna run into the same thing that we did with the budget here. Because we were very clear on that we were gonna have budget discussion at that time.
True.
And we confuse many of the members of the audience at that time. So I think we should look for a second, another day in that, personally. Now, I'm not, and I'm not advocating that we do another meeting, but sometimes you gotta do what you gotta do. Okay, other comments? The other possible, now, the other possibility is, is do it on the twenty-seventh when we have our master milestone meeting. Because that's what, three to six?
Three to five.
Three to five.
Uh-huh. It's two to five.
Two to five. And then do it after that.
I think that we should keep it on the twentieth and do, as has been suggested, that we meet from six to six forty-five. I think you're gonna get more people as a result of having it on that day because others will come to the business meeting. And I think that it is an issue of making sure that we publicize it properly.
Absolutely.
The only caveat I would put is, I'm not sure how you put an end time on it. Because if it's gonna start at six and you provide whatever the time is gonna be for, for speakers, then you have to provide that. So I think you still have to, would have to accommodate for the fact that you just can't necessarily say you cut it off at six forty-five if that turns out to be a...
Yeah, you've got to let it run and then begin the business meeting after the last speaker. And I thought about that as well. Yes, Noel.
Is there a way to do the consent agenda during that time and then have the rest of the time dedicated to the hearing?
Well, I mean, I'm sure there'll be, certainly we can, the, the agenda is up to us. We'll be doing agenda planning tomorrow, as a matter of fact. So technically, we can do whatever we want or need to do in terms of that agenda, modification, adjustments for this purpose. I certainly like the idea of having it at six. And if it runs a little bit past seven, then it does, and then we transition with a, a brief break on into the business meeting. Adding another day on the twenty-seventh, the twentieth is a very long day. Today is a long day, the twenty-seventh. We'll be back together again. We will be together every Wednesday near about in June. And so, so you, you, you know, you're talking five, five-hour days here, you know, every week on Wednesday. And so, so we need to make a decision. I just need to know who's in favor of the twentieth, just a straw poll when it's on, twentieth. Doc Stewart, which would be next Wednesday.
I support the twentieth, just to be clear. We're talking about beginning at three p.m.
Now, if we do the student appeal at two p.m., and we only leave four board members...
At two p.m.?
Yes. We would do the student appeal hearing, uh, two to three p.m.
Okay.
We would begin the, uh, closed session at four.
We wouldn't start at three?
At three.
So now, the beginning time is at two, and I understand and support beginning at that time. I'm, I'm available.
Okay. And then the forum hearing would be six, business meeting start as close to seven as possible. You support that, Ed?
I do.
Noel?
Um, I, I, I support the latter end of it, doing the hearing at six. I, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to be here at two. And I already had a meeting scheduled with Dr. Thornton at three o'clock to do our individual board member meetings with him at three o'clock. And we had to kind of shuffle that time around, so...
You'll still be with him at three.
We can work around that. We don't have to do that right here.
So Dr. Houston, let's just take a break here. So a few of us have already agreed that we can be here for the student support. I was one of them. Who else?
I'm one of them.
Two. Reverend Haywood?
I've just stated I can be here at two.
Okay, so the four of us can be here at two? Are we all good with that?
Yes.
Okay, so that's taken off the plate. So you don't start until three.
And so then, that was the time that I was supposed to be meeting with Dr. Thornton on our individual meeting.
Right.
So I have to go back and make sure that I can still meet with him because we were trying to meet prior to the milestones meeting.
Yeah.
So, see what we can do with that.
Okay.
Or we could try to be efficient and, um, keep ourselves on task so that we finish at six o'clock. And we don't have to come in that hour early. Risk-taking, right?
What are you telling me, start?
Well, we were, we backed it up an hour. We backed up our start time an hour to, two o'clock.
For the student appeal?
For the student, well, no, because originally we were starting at four. Our formal meeting, we were gonna be meeting at four. And then we had a student appeal that we said might be, back it up to two. But now that we're gonna do the public hearing at six, back that up again. So instead of starting at four, we're starting at three.
That's, that's because all the times we go over in that closed session.
That's, we do. Or we could try to be efficient and say we're still starting at four.
Oh, I follow you. Now, I'm with you. Yeah, dreams come true.
Yeah. Anyways, it sounds like we're...
Anything's possible.
I don't want to get us off track. Sorry about that.
Okay, no, you're fine.
The twentieth will work. We'll make it work.
This time now?
I have a question. So we'll have the, we'll have the, the superintendent feedback from six to whenever we finish. And then after that, we'll have a regular board meeting. We'll have citizens' comments as part of that, too.
That's correct.
Done? Okay.
Okay. Okay. All right, so we'll go up with the twentieth. Let's move on to the third, which is the, um, they have the work session. The work session would begin at one p.m. Is that correct, Janelle?
That's correct.
Um, and then, and that's from one to five. And then the, I'm not sure why we need four hours. We'll come back to that though. Recognition and awards at six p.m. And then the, uh, public hearing for the superintendent search at seven.
God bless you. God bless you.
Thank you. Um, I, I'm not sure we need one to five for that work session.
We had not moved forward enough in our agenda planning to plan June third yet. We weren't going to until tomorrow. So simply, I think it was a hold for four hours. Right. So it could be two to...
Yeah, let's hope so. Okay. Um, but, but the, the latter two would be the same. Recognition starting at six, that, that's the end of the year, of course, awards and recognition. And then the forum at seven p.m. And then we would determine the time, the start time for the work session based on the agenda planning tomorrow. Is everybody good with that date?
I am not. I'm representing the board at a, at a secondary school recognition ceremony that night, and I'll be pleased to be there and do that.
Would you be at the work session?
I cannot. That time is completely out for me.
Okay.
I'm gonna be at one of our secondary schools doing a, a recognition ceremony that night.
Okay, okay. Is everybody else good for that date?
The six p.m., um, I, I wasn't gonna be able to be there for that date due to a training session that I have to attend.
Okay, so after the work session, you would have to...
Right, right.
Okay. Ryan?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Okay. So I wouldn't be able to do the seven. I would go for everything except seven p.m. Okay? Um, that's, that's three of us that would not be able to be at the forum, but...
Would it be helpful if we moved it up then? Did the one to four, five to six recognition, six to seven super search? May not help Dr. Gabriel, but does it help others?
And that's why when I, you know, I originally sent out the email, you know, we, we know our goal is for everybody to be there. And this was, I was kind of trying to avoid because I know we can go through each meeting and, and go through this and try to rearrange everything, um, you know, to the best that we can. I think we need to try to have as, as many as possible. But the, the principle behind it is just to make sure that we have as many opportunities to hear and engage. And, uh, and that's why we have this. And then at some point, we'll get to the, the chat and chew. I, you know, I just think it's gonna be difficult to try to do all of this at, at this point.
Right. And so certainly, four. We would have, yeah, okay. So we'll, we'll go with the third as planned for those who are able to, to facilitate that. All right? And then the next would be on the sixth, that Saturday at Lakewood.
June fourth.
June fourth, I'm sorry. Yes. Now, yeah, one p.m. was the recommended time for that? I don't have the time on that email.
Yeah.
One p.m.
How'll that work there?
Yeah, they're in school.
The, well, early on, we checked on logistics to see if the facility would be available. So, yeah, that is true. School would be going on, but we would be in the auditorium.
The principal said that?
Yeah, I think Sherman checked on it some, some time ago.
Okay.
Luckily, it's not a catheter dormitory.
All right. Who can make the fourth? You can, yes. I can as well.
I can.
You can? Brad? All right.
They see patients during that time.
Gotcha. Okay, four of us can be there. Let's, let's move forward. All right, and then the sixth, Saturday at Lakewood, that's, uh, ten a.m.
Eleven. Ten or eleven?
I had the recommended ten and it got moved to eleven, so...
Why did we, why didn't we move it to eleven? Just curious.
I'm not sure how it got moved to eleven. The idea was, uh, that, that morning, so...
Are you reckon?
I can be there at eleven, uh, but I, I could change things to be there at ten, but I can be there.
Okay. How many of us, how, how, others for the Saturday morning? I can be there.
I cannot be there.
I cannot be there. But, but just from trying to accommodate some folks, if, I, I think ten o'clock would be a better time. Because if you're trying to attract people who would be coming in on a weekend, they have things scheduled for that day. Eleven o'clock puts them right in the middle of the day. And I think that ten o'clock would be a better time from a...
Okay.
Standpoint, uh, from a, from a parent, who's trying to get things done on a Saturday.
Yeah, right.
You want to get, get your, whatever you need to get done early.
I had the same thought, so.
Put your game in and then...
We start at eight.
Yeah, so, I mean, I would even say nine o'clock, but I think ten o'clock is probably a good time.
You're not gonna be there, right?
Start at eight, maybe. Start at eight, maybe.
Okay, um. Ten A M? Okay, alright, we, we have four that can be there. Okay, so that takes care of the twentieth, third, fourth, and sixth. We will move forward with those four.
Do we wanna then stop here and talk about who's facilitating and what the format is of those four sessions?
Well, the, the format, in my mind, uh, based upon the conversation we had, is a typical format where individuals would be able to come and offer their input and, uh, we would listen.
How many minutes?
Well, we could talk about that, what's, I don't, I'm not sure what's reasonable.
Normally, three.
Normally, three, which is our normal format.
And who would facilitate?
Well, I'm not sure so much facilitating as much as
Well, once we call it the order.
Opening up the meeting and explaining
Exactly.
why we're here and what the intent is, and then from that point, it follows the process that we are, that we're used to.
And so, and, uh, and, and I, I'm sure Rod is the liaison, if, if, you know, the two of us couldn't be there.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that, I just think it's important too that whoever is chairing and facilitating makes it very clear what the expectations are. And if anything gets off the rails, it gets back on the rails.
Yeah.
And that we're focused on looking forward and that we're not getting off topic, and that no one's offended if we say to somebody, please tonight, remember we're here to do X, Y, and Z. So, let's remain focused on that, so I think we have every, you know, right to keep it focused in that way, and I think it's just important for people to understand that.
Yeah, and I, I think that, you know, as, as part of this process and as much, um, uh, feedback and interest that we have from the community, I would anticipate that people are gonna show up for that purpose. And, uh, so, you know, it's always, uh, first amendment and free speech, but I do think that people are excited enough, engaged enough, and, and understand the work and our own outreach that we're gonna be doing that we should have, we'll have pretty good forums and pretty good input.
Okay, so, uh, let's talk about the, uh, chat and chew. Rodney, um, speak briefly about the, I mean, I don't mean.
No, it's fine, it's okay, I mean, part, I mean, we had discussed as, uh, as a board and also, uh, uh, V S B A had recommended that we have as much opportunity to engage, uh, you know, interested citizens and stakeholders, Dr. Robinson just mentioned in terms of, uh, more of an informal engagement session. So, the idea was that in, in, in addition to the normal public hearing style format, that we could have these chat and chews. And so, you know, the concept that I put out was at least trying to make it easy, was if we could pick a particular day, say what's gonna be around lunchtime, and then reach out to, uh, stakeholders, have them come, sign up, and, and have that more informal, uh, conversation around, again, the items that are on the superintendent's survey and the criteria and, and the interest that people have. So, the, the main thing there was really the logistics, you know, where do we do it, when do we do it? You know, how do we set it up and, and making sure that we extend the invitation to, to individuals to attend? So, you know, I had just thrown, I knew that at Norfolk Technical Center, if it was available, I know that they have the cafeteria there, it's kinda in the center of the city. That could be one way of doing it, they have parking, um, but that was kinda the thought, and I, nobody ever gave any other feedback, so that was just what I was putting out there as a way of doing it.
And your recommendation was each Tuesday during the month of June?
I mean, I was just try, again, I was just trying to think of something that would be consistent for the community, so that they knew that's what we were doing, in some way for those of us that are trying to work our schedules could also be consistent, but.
So, my recommendation would be if we're gonna consider this, that we would, um, identify, uh, specific, uh, stakeholder groups that we would invite, not saying that others would not, anybody else wouldn't be allowed to come. It, it, but, but perhaps we may target the business community, um, city leaders, um, uh, some, some of the, yeah, teach. Heard a voice.
I was gonna say that one option could be that the, you know, the teachers could host, but, no, I, I, I think we should try to do that, but also keep in mind that, you know, something that we talked about early on is that everybody's input is matters and everybody has, you know, equal value and input.
Sure.
So, we just have to make sure that we respect those principles, but at the same tr, same time, try to ma, make sure it's as diverse as, as possible.
Right, but we would, you know, this is our time, by this apple, to decide what we're gonna do, because beyond this, we, we, we wanna be able to publicize it.
Actually, your feedback was due April twenty-sixth, but I've yielded to, uh, May thirteen. I'm just teasing you, go ahead.
No, no, you weren't. I received it.
According to the timeline that, um, the V S B A has given us, they, uh, we are supposed to provide our established qualifications to them by June eleventh. So, we don't really have a lot of time in June.
Yeah, anything beyond that, we would just be chewing and chatting.
So, we have the second, we have the ninth, um, that could be potential times.
So, perhaps these four forums then, you know?
No, I think.
Well, I mean, I like the idea, we could do the.
Yeah, I mean, originally, again, that's why I had the April twenty-sixth deadline, 'cause I knew that if we're gonna try to do it, we really needed to be prepared.
What was the original deadline?
Pardon me?
Original deadline.
For feedback?
Yeah.
On this particular thing?
Right.
April twenty-sixth.
Oh, okay.
Okay, good. But, um, but I do think that we, we should take the opportunity, if the, uh, teachers' associations are willing to come together and host something, I think we should, uh, you know, reach out to that, if there's others that are, uh, that we can reach out to. I don't think we should scrap it, but I do think we should try to, based upon where we are now, see if we can at least get a couple of them there.
I like the idea of, look, June second, June ninth, N T C, noon. Two chat and chews, round tables.
Okay, how many folks could do the second?
Second of June?
Yeah, I could do the second.
At what time?
Noonish.
I can't do the ninth.
I can do the second.
Alright, how many folks can do the ninth?
I can do both.
Okay.
I just wanna clarify, on this time, everyone is invited to all meetings.
Right.
This just may be a time that we remind people of this particular time, not necessarily excluding anyone.
Yeah.
Just to have a special opportunity.
Correct.
Because all means all.
Yeah, and what we'll have to do.
I agree.
Uh, and I would just say that those dates would be tentative, 'cause we would have to work out the logistics with the, with the school, you know?
Well, we, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tentatively back my name out of the second for right now, until I can, I, I need to check on one thing for the second.
Okay.
The ninth is definite.
So, two other quick matters, one, one thing that's gonna be very important is how we record this information. And, um, I know in the past, cards were used, do you all have anything that you all recommend that we can actually give the folks at forums that they can complete? Which is another useful way in us being able to capture the feedback, other than just ascribe and taking notes, um.
In most cases, you know, what, what, and many times what they use is to have the survey available, a paper copy of the survey, if they're not since completed one, that way they do have the opportunity to complete that there. Uh, we found most board members are, are taking notes, um, but also, you know, if you did have a, a staff member that, that is there to, you know, write down the main, main categories, main topics, uh, main takeaways. Um, I'm not familiar with any that have done the, the card thing where people can also write that down, because what they, uh, did not wanna do is to confuse any other paper documentation with the surveys.
Gotcha.
Because they really wanted all of the, any of that type of response in, in one, one place, if there was, you know?
Right, and I think that would be the same with the, you know, recording at the forums, a designated person, staff person perhaps, I think, but rather than, uh, uh, five, six, or seven of us taking notes and then trying to somehow, you know, compile and synthesize that, that could be a nightmare.
Well, I'm not su, well, and you are correct, but I'm not sure it's so much about, uh, trying to synthesize, I think, as, in, 'cause not all of us are gonna be at every meeting anyway.
Right.
And I think the main thing is we are hearing the information, we're recording like we do any other point in time, and then combined with the surveys and the conversation and deliberations we're gonna have, you know, we could, you know, I could say, well, you remember at the June second forum, this is something that I heard. And so, it's still gonna be a deliberative process where we're gonna take the written surveys that we have, plus the other thoughts that we have and input that we've had, and be able to, to put that together, so I'm not, I'm not sure if we need to ascribe everything, but I, but I do think having the, the surveys there is good.
At the very beginning, if you ask for feedback, you wanna use it. If you're unable to really capture that feedback in a way and not just trust memory, you know, um, you could run the risk of not being able to really fully capture and utilize it. So, um, I, I wouldn't trust memory in this regard, you know, you could have, you know, a couple dozen speakers in each of the forums, and then, you know, the chew and chat, and so I, I think we definitely want to, in some way, capture and writing, uh, the feedback and comments, so, so that we can do the rest of our ability to utilize it.
So, may I make a recommendation that perhaps, Janelle, at the four formal public hearings, records the comments. Some are gonna be recorded anyway because they're part of our official meetings. And then for the chat and chews, Janelle, perhaps you wouldn't mind being there also, and you're also there, we can also take our personal notes, but yet then again, we have Janelle there who will take and, and maybe record them still, frankly, you could, you could still record them. And then that could be our record of what was said in addition to our own personal notes. I, I think that's important.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not pushing back, I just think that ultimately, uh, you know, we're gonna have to be able to absorb and, and hear what's being said. I just wouldn't want us to be so reliant on some notes that we aren't focused on, you know, what's being said, but it's not.
Okay. Okay, uh, the final thing that, that I have, certainly we'll get into closing comments from board members as well as, uh, from, uh, Jeanette and Peter, but one, one of the things that was mentioned earlier, um.
We had a date in which we would decide what those qualifications would be.
Well, on, on the timeline, we have a deadline to get that information to the Jane Schoolboys Association, which is.
And actually, we need to come up with that date now, this evening?
Well, the, what I, when this is recommended.
Many, we have a meeting on the tenth.
It's a business meeting.
Right, so whether it was, again, since we already wanna be together, whether or not we could do that on the tenth versus trying to, uh, you know, we just say we're gonna do a chat and chew on the ninth. We're coming together on the tenth.
We could have, do it informal at five? We could start the personnel, have the closed session at, um, three, and then do an, uh, open informal at five for that purpose?
I just think when you're doing the, as you all work on the agendas for those meetings.
Right.
That if there, if there are things on there that are essential, that we have to do in terms of our regular business, we handle those, but if there are presentations or other things that are not as critically important as this is, that it would provide us more time to, uh.
But we wouldn't do this at seven, we wouldn't do this in the business meeting, this should be as a part of.
No, I'm saying that day, so we, you know, we always talk about we have the potential two to six, three to six
Right.
closed session piece. If there are things that we can perhaps defer or narrow, uh, it would give us more time to, to do that.
Right.
The, the other thing I think, uh, we haven't, we didn't talk about earlier, and I think we should mention, 'cause the board has discussed this, is, um, that we also said we were being intentional, trying to make sure with the schedule that with the recognition that there potentially would be some board changeover, that after, that we were intentionally holding the interview process until, uh, you know, until the, the new board is, is there, 'cause we.
That, that's, that's already part of the timeline now.
Yeah, but we didn't, hadn't talked about it, so I just wanna make sure that that's also something that's, that's clear, that we're being intentional about that.
But it's, yeah, but it's, it is clear, it's on the timeline.
Well, it's clear to the, well.
That's, that's my point.
That's what Mr. George is trying to say. That we wanna make sure the public understands
Everybody didn't have that.
that we're not gonna be, we're not gonna be, uh.
Janelle confident.
We're not gonna be making any decisions, e, even interviewing any candidates until after the first of July.
Right, for, for the specific point of the fact that there might be new board be, board members, and we want them to have input into who the new superintendent is gonna be, because they will be working directly with him or her.
Mr. Chairman, I, I wanna be sure that we're not rushed on June tenth to make those decisions about established qualifications.
Yeah, so I, I think there's gonna certainly have to be a process prior to the tenth to begin to kinda, you know, correlate this information. Certainly, seven of us sitting down together in an open and formal meeting, trying to, you know, compile this information, that, that's, so there's gonna have to be some work behind the scenes on that, and then, um, uh.
Well, probably the easiest way to do it is to ba, base it first off of the survey. Uh-huh. They'll compile the survey results. And then, um, the input that Janelle has from our recorded formal sessions, we can assimilate that into the survey. Where are those, where are those points fall into the survey, if they fall into the categories of the survey, and if there's an other category, then we'll just make an, you know, something else comes up then.
I agree. Let's, let's, look at the timeline, let's push that back a little bit, you all need time to actually digest some of this information. You're gonna have all that information in front of you, gotta make sure you've looked at everything and considered not only the survey, but, um, the comments that you're receiving, because, and I'm just throwing this out here as an example, what if you receive a thousand surveys that will hand, I'm not saying you would, but you could. And we wanna include all those, and we need to get us that information.
There's a lot of comments and information.
Would you say Brad, I'm sorry? Yeah, yeah, staff will be here. Um, so, um, could we put, could we possibly push that back a little bit, before we give them?
Yeah, I mean, you know, right now, we've got the, the deadline for the surveys as June sixth, which is that same day as the final public hearing. And so, we did, that is the deadline for the, the public hearing, and so on June seventh, any final paper copies could be collected at the locations and then provided to, to the V S B A. Uh, we could then get those back to you all, I mean, even if we shifted the, provide established qualifications to the V S B A a week to, say, the eighteenth, that would give you another week of ti, you know, just, just in terms of some flexibility for you all, might give you a little bit more time. It would, it would, then we'd push the, the receipt of applications one week, but again, um, I still think we'd be, we'd be okay, and actually, it would, it would get the, yeah, I, I think we'd be fine. Um, you know, just that second meeting, we might have to look at dates for maybe that first week of August, but depending on how, I, I think, so if you all are comfortable with moving it one week, it would still keep you well within the timeline, still be a, an aggressive one, but again, you don't wanna rush the, the initial steps.
And, and, and I think if, if there are, you know, two board members that, you know, would be able and willing to work together to receive this information and at least begin that process, seven people sitting together doing that, that, that's a nightmare, so as I'm concerned.
So, you're talking about a superintendent search committee?
No, no, I'm talking about a seven, just to prove. Just collecting this information.
Okay, just, just wanna be clear on that.
Okay.
Well, I could, with the, if I, if I, if I could, with the survey results, one thing that, keep in mind that it'll be categorized and it'll have the rankings and whatnot. I think where, what Gina might have been referencing is, especially with, with the open-ended answers, that's where there could be time to digest those. That's, 'cause there's so much there, I mean, some of these things, you know, in terms of preferred, required, what are the top three, it's rankings, those are a lot easier to see, it's some of the narrative side that.
And, and I think, in our processing of the information, there are certain things we're gonna hear, uh, time and time again. I think those are the things we wanna make note of, you know, um, um, you know, those kinda top three or four things that we hear over and over and over, whether in the forums, or in the, uh, you know, chat and chew, or in informal conversations that we, that, as, as, as we approach by stakeholders. I think those top three or four things are the things we wanna make sure we capture, and, uh, and that it informs our decision-making, uh, in this, in this matter.
We set time aside, because even as we, in this, and when I was working on it, I was looking at graduations and so forth. So, even as we talk about pushing it out a week, that next week is the graduation of week.
Right.
So, I would still recommend that, um, that we have our initial, fir, initial crack at it
Right.
on the tenth. And so that, and so that we can be, set it, set a time, uh, set time aside and be focused on that, and then perhaps we can look at, um, what we should be talking about is a, uh, second date. If we find it on the tenth, we don't get it all, get it all done.
Right, and so I, I, I think if we designate five P M as a open and formal, uh, between the closed session personnel session and the business meeting, that we'll be able to do just that on the tenth.
I just need clarity, what time should we be here on the tenth?
Well, I think we should begin at three with closed session, so that we know we have plenty of time, end of the year, sometimes the document is, you know, of course, longer than, uh, you know, at other times, and so, uh, to give us ourselves time to. to do our due diligence in that matter, then begin opening formal at five, uh, from five until, uh, you know, six fifteen or so, and give ourselves time to transition to the business meeting at seven. We would need to be here at three then, Dr. Stewart, to answer the question. Okay, yes.
So, in terms of process, let's talk about the conversation on the tenth. By then, we will have had our chat and chews and our four public hearings, that will have been recorded, notes taken. So, and personal notes taken too, as we are listening. So, would the basis of the tenth conversation be better served if, again, to your point, maybe Rodney and some other board member sat down with the clerk, the notes, and said, okay, this is what the common themes were. That's what we use as the basis of the discussion on the tenth, and then I might personally say, well, at the chat and chew, I heard this is a very dominant theme, and I don't see this on this document, let's add this. So, at least we have a baseline of what all has been said.
Right.
And then we can add to it, that then can become a framework of what these qualifications are.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Okay, who wants to work with Rodney on that?
Rodney, G S B, and I'm with the survey, so that we can have, uh, at least maybe a rough draft of the survey results.
Well, the surveys, I think we could go ahead and submit to them, just those-
As long as we get, yeah, as long as we, what, what works really well is, is on a regular basis, you know, if, if it's every week, sending-
Okay.
The paper copy surveys in. What we found is actually scanning those as a P D F. and emailing to us, to, emailing them to us electronically works extremely well, so that way, they're not all coming in at the end. So, if we get those on an ongoing basis, and that last week, maybe we get them twice, that, because the ideal for us would be to turn around those survey results to all the board members as quickly as possible, so you have time to review it, and, and look at those, um, prior to the tenth. So, I think the, the key to that is really just going to be communicating, especially near the end, if we do find there's a, there's a lot of electronic ones that come, or paper ones that come in, and just making sure that we're communicating and knowing where we are with that.
Okay. All right, final question that I have, um, and Gina, you mentioned this earlier, when Reverend Hayward, uh, spoke about the confidentiality matter and process interviews, sitting superintendents. And, uh, we know that, uh, uh, sometimes this process, given from the district and the board, includes public interviews, and I heard you say earlier, that we need to establish upfront, uh, if that's gonna be included in the process, because that determines oftentimes whether or not a person will apply, correct? And so, uh, I, I think, um, we, we need to talk a little bit about that, and, uh, and you tell me how soon that part of decision has to be made.
Right now.
Okay, so, um, um, so what I'm making is, of course, uh, s- some districts have included, and at one point, we did as well, a public interview of the three, uh, finalists, and, uh, and some superintendent candidates, um, uh, not just uncomfortable with it, but unwilling, uh, uh, to participate in that because of, uh, uh, you know, for confidentiality reasons. So, we need to decide as a board whether or not that's gonna be a part of it or no. Comments?
So, I'm just gonna make this really clear. The reason that there is concern about having a public interview is because some superintendents are sitting in their position.
Mm-hmm.
And if they're applying, and if they're, undergo a public interview process, then the cat is out of the bag.
Correct.
Okay, uh, and so we have that on one end, and then on the other hand, we have a community who wants to be able to have some type of a, um, feel that they were part of the process, more so with a public interview. So, we, those are the two things that we're kind of weighing amongst ourselves right now.
Could I also add to that? I don't wanna overstep.
No, please, wrong me.
The other thing to consider with that too, is it's not just sitting superintendents, but it's also, what type of position are you putting whomever you select in when they go into that new role? Uh, it's one thing to ha- to come out of, out of a, out of a search, which is, uh, these are all always very, very taxing, and take a lot of time and energy and effort on the board. It's one thing to say, after this comprehensive nationwide search, we have selected this individual to, to be the superintendent, and here's why they, they were the best, and, and why we, we chose that person. If you end up with a slate of people that are, that are put forth in front of the community, it turns into a popularity contest, to be frank. And the discussion is about who you did not select versus who you did select. And so, so it, it, they're, they're, the conversation from the beginning with that new person is very, very different, because automatically, they're going to, going to have the sense or the impression that there are people in the community that did not want them. Um, and, and it, and it really, it, it's a very, very different way to start a superintendency. And I just wanted to, to add that, that's another component as well, because it does turn into that popularity contest of, oh, I wanted this person, and I didn't want this person.
Thank you.
Uh, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, so I thought as we went through the, uh, the R S Q. process, and, um, and part of while we were going out of, out of our way to try to make sure we were having as much, uh, community input and buy-in at the front end of the process, and just in our own recognition of where we are as a, as a district, we really can't afford, um, to have any qualified candidate, based upon whatever comes out in terms of priorities, feel that they don't wanna come because of concerns about confidentiality. So, I really felt like we had already kinda talked about that, and, and that we were gonna go in the direction of, um, not doing the public interview, uh, not having, uh, anyone up in the board members being a part of the, the interview process, but in the chat and chew, in the public hearing, in the outreach, in the qualification portion of, uh, of this effort, that that's where we're gonna try to make sure we were as available and transparent and accessible, uh, as possible to get that community input, 'cause that's just the situation that we're in. And so, that's, I'm still in that place.
Mm-hmm.
That I think we need to si- err on the side of, um, trying to make sure we have as wide of a high-quality candidate pool as possible, and if anything is likely to limit that, that we need to be careful that we don't do that.
Okay, Nora?
I'm to- in total agreement, and if during the public forums and the chat and chews, uh, community members say, um, not only do I want you to take into consideration what I've written on the survey, but can you please consider asking X, Y, or Z question, if it's that important to them, bring it to our attention? And if that's something that we discuss with the V S B A, um, then we'll have that information. And we are representatives of the public, so I don't see why it would be, wouldn't be a problem for us to in- include that in our, our interviews with him.
Okay, thank you. Warren?
I've got two exclamation points at this point.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I've been involved in this for thirty years, on all sides of this issue. And whereas I think if Kim Kardashian, or David Letterman, or, uh, Trump showed up, they'd probably do very well in such a public hearing, but in no way could I support that being part of this process. It's dangerous, it's harmful, and in no way could I support this. This would be very harmful and wrong.
Thank you. Courtney, you had a comment?
I support the confidentiality as well. That's why we're getting public input early and often, so that we can make a good decision, but we need a highly qualified candidate, and there isn't going to be one applying for this position if they're gonna jeopardize their current seat. So, I am in full support, and I would be loath to be anything but.
Okay, all right. I'm supportive of that as well. I, I just wanted us to be real clear so we, so that, uh, Gina and Peter left a clear understanding of where we are. All right, any other questions or comments related to this evening's discussion? Yes, Dr. Stewart.
Being involved with observing and part of Virginia School Boards Association in this process for more than thirty years, I'm more than pleased and even proud that we have a partner like the Virginia School Boards Association. Now, this sample, uh, press release has, I'm not sure who's quoted in that, but some very wise statements, and one term that's used is best fit. Not only am I pleased, but I'm proud that Virginia School Boards Association, that I have watched, do wonderful things in locating the best-fit superintendent around the state of Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you. Courtney?
So, I have some just detailed questions, process questions. I don't know if others they feel like that we've answered these, but who is gonna distribute these surveys, paper copies to all schools, collect them, bring them back, scan them, phase them?
Well, I made a note, uh, Janelle's notes earlier, that we need to, uh, have a survey collection process.
Yeah.
And I figure offline with s- staff and administration, we can figure out how to, how to make that work.
Okay, and then have you also talked with, um, I guess Elizabeth and team regarding building out a website, content page, and a little more?
Very early on, the same email that I provided to you, I provided to them, and they've had an opportunity to, to prepare, so, uh, yes.
'Cause I think we need to do that A S A P., so that we can post the survey. Hampton had a very nice site that was technically hosted by their chair with a nice note, and then that's the central location for all content related to the search, which makes it easy for the community to go to one place and not have to dance all over the site.
Absolutely.
So, I advocate for that. So, I hope we can do that very quickly, so that we can just get the information together.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
To add to that, and that is, I believe, um, and I appreciate the work that Rodney's doing as, as being the liaison, but I think the chair should be the face of this, this, this process.
Well, I think we, uh, okay, all right, any other? Yes.
Yeah, also as part of the survey collection process, determining where the surveys will be distributed.
Yeah.
So, um, if we're going to have them at P T A. meetings, uh, or banks, or grocery stores, you know, where, where are we gonna drop them off, and what is the page gonna look like in front of it to say where to drop it off, so that we cast that wide net? And I'm really grateful that the V S B A. is here to lead us through this process, so that we can have a best-fit superintendent. I'm very excited about it.
All right, uh, any closing words for us? Uh, Ms. Patterson?
A lot of work, a lot of hard work, but I know you all can do it, and we're here to help you, so, good luck.
Thank you. Uh, we began at Norview-
At five, the program begins at five thirty, and the-
Ascender point will be at six thirty. Where's the ascender point?
In the auditorium.
In the auditorium.
And the reception starts at what time?
At six thirty. So, the program is at five thirty, it begins at five.
Something starts at five, doesn't it?
Correlating this information.
Five thirty and the other time.
Let's do that. Okay, let's not. So, if I could add just one more level of detail, sorry, Dr. Stewart, you were about to get up and going. Who on the board is gonna work with Mr. Jordan to prepare the baseline content that we can then discuss on June tenth, on which we can build by adding our own additional comments?
Oh, real quick, Mr. Jordan, I'm told that-
Mr. Jordan didn't actually volunteer, but I'll, I'll say.
I'm told that, uh, he thinks my thoughts were mine, so I'm gonna work with him.
Well, and you'll obviously have to work with Janelle, because she has the, the content.
Okay. I'll try to get the cameras cut off, and, uh, so.
Okay, well, thank you all very much. Uh, our business, uh, is taken care of, so we'll adjourn. Thank you all very much.